Eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen to order. First off, are there any disclosures of interest? Counselor Sharp?
I have to disclose within the approval of the planning minutes of November twelfth. My parents have an application within that. I already declared in writing within those minutes.
Great, that'll be noted, Counselor Sharp. Any others? No, seeing none. First up, we have the, before we get to the delegations, we have the adoption of the previous council minutes. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolved that the following council meeting minutes be approved. Council of November fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and special counsel of November eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? That's carried. And our first delegation tonight is Angela Bonamessisi of the IBI Group. I think I might have got that wrong, and I'm sorry.
Good evening. I actually, I kind of just made myself a delegation out of an abundance of caution. If anybody had any questions to answer, or for me to answer or provide clarification, I can give a brief rundown of my presentation at Planning Committee if you'd like. But really, if there are no other delegations, then I don't need to speak.
Well, I'll leave it up to counsel. Would counsel want? Yes, I think we'd like to hear your presentation.
So this is our site plan for two twenty-six and two twenty-eight Main Street East. What it is, is currently two parcels of land that has an existing residence on it. At the statutory public meeting, there were many comments received to which we took back and altered the concept with side yard setbacks. And so our side yard setback is one point five. Our lot eight, which there is, do you have a pointer or something for me to? So lot eight, I guess I could say, is the bottom left lot on the screen. That has a Westerly side yard of one point eight meters, and this is to provide distance to the rear yard of the existing lot to the left. All other side yards will be one point five meters, which provides a three meter separation between dwellings, which is quite normal for side yards, thank you. And then in terms of height, our units are bungalow. So the height maximum is five point eight meters. These aren't over towering any other of the adjacent neighborhoods. What else was brought up in terms of compatibility? These are eight bungalow units that abut an existing neighborhood that consists of two-story dwellings, bungalows, and bungalow units. In terms of design sensitivity, our lot five, which is that lot right there, it will not have windows on the loft part of the side yard that abuts the existing residence to kind of maintain that extra privacy. So that was our consideration for the adjacent properties. There was comments regarding a rear to side yard interface. Where we have that is lot eight abuts the rear yard of this lot. And over here, the side yard of lot five abuts the rear yards of these two lots on Dorchester Drive. In terms of the neighborhood as well, in my presentation, I accounted for thirty-one situations where this already exists in that neighborhood. And just in terms of when you have an intersection of a road, that's what you end up with is a rear to side yard interface, just to make a nice pleasant streetscape, and so that you see frontages of houses and not just a fence line if you continued it all the way to the street. So that was our basis for the changes to our plan. In terms of compatibility, at first, we wanted to maintain the Main Street zone. But we revised the zoning so that lot one is the only lot subject to the Main Street zone. The rest of the lots are subject to the RD four zone, which is what we initially modeled our site-specific Main Street zone after. And the units along Dorchester are all RD four zones as well. Under here, these are RD five zones. And then this lot, which is unique to the neighborhood, that is an RD two zone. RD two allows for a larger lot. And yeah, so it's just, it is compatible with the zoning in the neighborhood. And also, just in terms of the built form, we're not looking to put two stories. The lot one and lot five are the only two-story houses. Lot one needs to be two stories to be sensitive to the Heritage House, that is the Udel House along Main Street. So we did a heritage impact study, and we've had an architect kind of do a concept as to how to reflect and be sensitive to the Udel House. And lot five, as you can see, there is a jog in the rear yard, which makes it a less conventional lot, hence why a bungalow would not fit on that lot, but a two-story, there's more than enough room to accommodate that. So that is basically the, kind of a high-level rundown of our application and what were, what was passed by Planning Committee last week. And I am open to answer any questions or clarification that any of you counselors would have.
Thank you, Ms. Bonamici. Better that time. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thanks for the presentation. I wasn't able to attend the last planning meeting, but it looks like a very interesting concept in development. How many parking spots are on the, or public parking spots, or however you want to categorize it?
So we will provide five visitor parking spots, which are located over here. And each house is a two-car garage, so you have the two cars and the two driveway spots in the development. And so that is pretty normal. We do offer more than fifty percent visitor parking.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Again, I just understand it. Is there a requirement for a handicap spot in there at all? Or is that not required with that type of development, or that type of parking situation?
I would have to get back on that. Once again, we will be doing a draft plan of condominium, which does all the detailed design of like parking spots and that. I do believe there is some room to accommodate a accessible. We can expand the fifth spot down here to make it, sorry, on the lower, to make it more, we can make it into an accessible one if one is required. You're welcome.
Counselor Bane?
You see, these are free holds, is that correct? They're not condos?
Yeah, so our intent is that people will purchase the house, but they have to pay a condo fee for the maintenance of the road.
Okay. The, my understanding in regards to Counselor Cadwell's question, my understanding is you will require at least one handicap parking space. That's my understanding of it. Also, just a comment, having spoken to the homeowners, I have to admit, I really like what this is going to be doing. I just, one other quick question, is the existing home, I see a gray box there next to the Heritage Home, is the existing home remaining?
The existing home is not remaining. The gray box, and I don't know if you're talking about that?
Yes.
That's actually a garage that's on the Udel property. So if you ever drive by, there's like a detached garage. That's not on our property. So one of the, one of the issues that was brought up was maintaining the distance, the front yard setback for lot one, the same distance as the Udel House. And so we just highlighted the Udel structures on their property. So that's the house, and then they have a detached two-door garage.
So the driveway that's showing on this picture is going to actually come up from where the house was, or is?
The driveway is actually in the same location where the current driveway is. So the existing house actually sits about this area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to the presenter. If I could just ask about the first unit, the one that's lot one, have you set it back further than it originally was? And if so, what, did it have any impact on the house? Because I think the garage is in behind it. Did you have to reduce the backyard, or reduce the size of the house? Just so we know that you've gone ahead and done that. Because I think it was originally further towards the street.
It was about a meter.
A meter?
Closer to the street, so now it is in line with the Udel House. In terms of the zoning bylaw, this is your front lot line, so this is your rear yard. So we had to do modifications, but the rear yard here will function as a side lot line, and the rear yard will be over here. And two, with the sensitivity of the Udel House, you do not want a second driveway or a driveway fronting on Main Street that would then block the Udel House from sightlines.
Thanks for doing that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Lot one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. What changes did you make to lot eight? Because I remember there were concerns from people, I think it's on Lawrence Avenue.
So the changes we made were basically the distance of the side yard. What we were proposing in the first one was a one point five meter side yard. We've extended it to one point eight meters. That is just, you know, in terms of the wanting to have windows on the second loft, or the loft portion of the bungalow. And so it does match the RD four zoning. And that is what the parent bylaw allows for a side yard setback. So we just matched it with the parent bylaw.
All right. And did you, did you increase the backyard distance as well? Did you increase?
No, the back, the rear yard weren't increased. They are six meters, which is a normal rear yard to request. The only exception is lot five, and that's because of the jog in the road here. So the pinch point there is about five point five meters. And that's, we did ask for a reduction in that rear yard. So there is reductions in the rear yard, but they're not, they are still good-sized rear yards.
Thank you, seeing no further questions. Thank you, Ms. Bonamici, for your presentation, and I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frake, resolved that the delegation of Angela Bonamici of the IBI Group with reference to two twenty-six to two twenty-eight Main Street East be received. All in favor? That's carried. And up next, Counselor Furtick is going to have a delegation updating Regional Council from last week. Thank you. Good evening, Counselor Furtick.
You're in staff and the general public. Couple of hot issues right now. Of course, one is waste management, but I think we're waiting ourself through the pond and getting to the other side, and it looks pretty successful so far. We've approved two contractors to pick up the garbage when the new contract comes in effect in October of 2020. GFL will have the contract for Grimsby. The region will be reporting back to Public Works about December the third with a recommendation on preferred options for curbside diversion, container distribution, and to finalize the new collection contract in reference to its costs. There is a few things that are not settled yet. One of those things is diapers and how they're going to take care of the retirement homes as well. So that's still to come forward. So when it does, I'll report back to you and tell you what the region has decided. We are implementing a Vision Zero Road Safety Program. And the program will be installing red light cameras, automated speed enforcement, and particularly, community safety zones. One of the very concerning safety zone in Grims, actually, there's two of them, and that's at the two schools that are on Number Eight Highway. We will be putting enhanced signage, pavement markings, road geometrics and designs where required. There's also, with the red light cameras, there's going to be installation of camera, red light cameras across the Niagara region. So I'd be very careful in the future in coming up and trying to go through a red light, so it might cost you a few dollars. Counsel is still dealing with the budget and should have it finalized in its final presentation in mid-December. Vanessa Ackroyd, who is a landscape architect, is at Planning last week, gave a presentation about the PRIP, which is Public Realm Investment Program. In Grimsby, the economical development minutes that I had read, the DIA was considering to plant trees along Main Street, put in benches and other landscape improvements. The PRIP program is a value-added program that provides the opportunity for local municipalities to partner with the region on all of these capital expenditures. So I might strongly recommend that when you get to anything that you've drafted up and you want to get, we'll ask Vanessa to come and give a presentation to you, because the program is fabulous. And it matches funds along regional roads. If you go to Smithville, you'll see that they've done a few things right at the corner there where the old, the old tie factory and the stoplights are. They've really enhanced that, that whole area. They've also done some enhancement in Beamsville as well. So there is matching funds available, up to a hundred thousand dollars. So please make that opportunity when you, when you have it and you need a help with, or you need some help with it. Let the mayor or myself know, and we can help push it through. There's many other things that the PRIP program qualifies for, and some of that qualifications is, it will put in benches, it'll, it'll do sidewalks, it'll plant trees. There's a whole bunch of things that it'll do. So I strongly recommend that Economic Development or DIA, that, you know, when you get together with that, with those programs, take a good look at them, and we'll help you along. So other than that, I don't have anything more. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Oh, we would like to- Oh, we, we would like to, um, we, we have a, another program that was presented to us the other day, and it's called On Demand, as opposed to the, uh, other, the Lincoln Transit. On Demand is, it, it looks like it's going to be a company called VIA. And VIA is a huge, huge organization that, uh, but I'm not the expert at it, but I will certainly ask, uh, the region to come forward, uh, as well. And, uh, they need to do a presentation to you because they got all the answers, I don't. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Furtick. Any questions? I see Counselor Vane.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Furtick, just, I know you just said you don't have a lot of information on the VIA thing, but I, I've heard a little bit about it, and I'm probably a little bit less than yourself, but do we have an idea of when this is being proposed to at least be piloted or anything? Do we have a date on that? And also, I have a comment when you're finished answering that.
It's just preliminarily come to the region. And there hasn't been anything specific, uh, as to any dates and stuff like that. So it's my understanding that, that part of that, part of that program is, is providing the service to Grimsby and to West Lincoln.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Just a quick comment, too, I want to add about your, the announcement of the red light, which I fully support. Just a word of caution to everybody who's watching, who's here, who's listening, whatever. One of the biggest problems we have with red light cameras, and it's not really a problem, it's just, um, drivers, some drivers tend to want to speed up, other drivers will slam on the brakes. As soon as they see the light starting to change, they lock up the brakes. We have more rear-end accidents as a result of red light cameras, but the injuries that are sustained are far less than being T-boned in an intersection. So just, when you, everybody should just be driving cautiously, is all I'm trying to say. Thank you very much for everything.
Oh, sorry. It's my understanding that, um, it'll only take the picture when the vehicle reaches the, the marker before it crosses. Uh, once, once it turns red, as long as the vehicle hasn't entered into the, entered the intersection, if it has, it'll take its picture.
I, I'm thinking of the car behind the vehicle that stops.
Oh, yeah.
It's the, uh, cars will follow too closely, thinking they're going to run the red light, and the driver in the front will be the one that suddenly decides to stop, and they get rear-ended. But it, the lesser of two evils, I'd rather have the red light cameras, they save lives. Thank you.
Seeing, oh, Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. I thought you saw my hand go up earlier, sorry. Yeah, to, to Counselor Furtick, uh, the waste, the garbage, uh, just some questions for the audience and those who are listening. These two new contracts will take effect in the fall, I believe, is that right? And then we will go to alternate weeks with our waste garbage, and every week for plastic and composting, if I'm correct. And the other question is, are we going to clear bags? I understand we're not, but I just wanted some clarification there, too.
It's my understanding it's not clear bags. But, um, we will be going to picking up garbage once every two weeks. Let's understand this, because if you do your recycling properly and redo your organics properly, and put the organics where they're supposed to go, and they're picked up every week, if you do that properly, there should be extremely minimal rodents, simply because the organic is already gone out every week, and it's going out every week now, as well as the recycling for, uh, paper and, uh, and plastics. So the, the whole intention of this is to increase the more, the amount of organics rather than put in, in the landfill. Road 12 landfill, that we started 25 years ago, Mr. Cadwell?
About 25.
Yeah, it was about 25 years ago, and the life of that was 25 years. Well, here we are 25 years down the road, and guess what the life of that landfill site is now? It's 46 years. That's phenomenal. It's because we are recycling the way we should do. And if we continue to look at the program and look at it by, you know, by getting rid of the organics out of your waste, then guess what? Maybe we'll be at 47 years, you know, 10 years from now. Who knows? But it, the idea is to increase the amount of garbage that's going to the, going to the landfill. Correct?
Thank you. Counselor Sharp?
Okay, I just had a quick question, Counselor Furtick, about, you mentioned that the diapers hadn't been ironed out yet. And, um, so having two kids in diapers right now, and I currently qualify for a certain diaper exemption that allows a clear bag of diapers each week to be put additional to the, the garbage. And, um, so I use that because we keep our diapers separately from our other waste. And I'd rather not keep it, but I know there's a, a lot of families in Grimsby who would have the same problem. And if anyone would like, I can drop a bag off at their house if they want to hang on to for a couple of weeks to see what, it's like they come from a diaper genie, so it's like the least, but it's 23 bucks a package for the, the bag that goes into the diaper genie, and you get a few bags out of it, but it's, um, it's, it's not free for this. And, uh, and I, I assure you, you wouldn't want me to drop off a couple diaper genies at your house to hang on to for a couple of weeks, and I don't want to keep them either. So can you just let me know what is going on with that?
Uh, through the chair, uh, through the mayor, to the counselor, that decision hasn't been completed, simply because they're still doing, uh, extra study on it. They do know that, that it is an issue. So I can't give you any more update until such time as, uh, they come. We've got a whole year to educate ourselves, so, uh, that'll be one of the things that, uh, and maybe you should use the phrase, "Your diapers ironed out?" How do you do that?
So when, when the appropriate time comes, if you could mention my concern at the region, I would appreciate that.
Through the chair, I will.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you to the presenter. Counselor Furtick, you've mentioned about the landfill, the extended life of the landfill, and there was a good article in the St. Catherine Standard, again, reflecting on recycling in the region, where the region is now and where the region wants to go. Are there numbers that you could maybe, uh, give us publicly that are, you know, anticipated, you know, benchmarks with the recycling? Because I understand we're, Niagara region's doing a pretty good job as compared to a lot of other regions, but is there any information you can bring forward to that? Thank you.
To Alder, um, I'm sorry, I just almost said Alderman again here, Counselor Cadwell. It's my understanding that the recycling percentage right now is about 56%. They want to increase that to at least 65. There's also a suggestion that, uh, they might be looking at trying to increase that percentage, but that's neither here nor there, nor there, right now. So it's 65 is the aim.
Thank you, Counselor Furtick. Seeing no further questions, uh, thanks for your presentation. Up next, we have Approval Committee Minutes, Administration and Finance. Counselor Frake, would you like to speak on them?
Stephen, this is going to talk about the addendum.
First up, we're going to have, uh, our Treasurer, Stephen Greniger, talk about the addendum.
Thank you. Um, so with regard to Finance Report, Fin 1922, our budget considerations, we, um, I made an adjustment to the budget schedule, added in a couple of items. First off, I wanted to show in the, in the budget schedule that the council's strategic priorities, um, will be completed on December 2nd. And I've also included in, um, under January 27th, uh, the draft will be released to cancel the draft budget posted online, and there'll be an opportunity for the public to provide online feedback. After that time, there'll be a two-week period where a council can meet with staff, in particular myself, one-on-one, to ask any questions about the budget, uh, and we can go over, um, any issues, um, in the draft budget. So those are the changes that were made to, um, the draft budget schedule. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counselor Vane?
Um, Stephen, I'm not sure, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is a question I should be asking you or Counselor Frake, but, um, I, I see as part of the Finance Minute meetings that, um, we're not going to be putting our budget through committee anymore. Are we not even going to put it through for discussion? I mean, not any kind of vote, but just so that they're aware? Is that, has been excluded completely? And maybe Counselor Frake might be the one to answer that, I don't know.
Um, I, I can address it, yeah. So, um, for the 2020 budget, what we're looking to do is, uh, what we used to do in the past, I should maybe start there, is, um, all budgets would go through standing committee first and be reviewed at standing committee, and then they would proceed to committee of the whole. Uh, what we're looking to do for this year, um, to expedite the budget process and to, um, make council completely as a group responsible for the budget, is have committee of the whole meetings only. What we found, um, when the budgets were just going to standing committee, is that, um, we were having silos looking at the budget, and we thought it would be good for all departmental budgets to go straight to this committee of the whole, so all of council can see the budgets all at once.
Thank you. Counselor Bothwell?
Just going to comment on Counselor Vane's as well, that question, because it was in my mind as well. I, I miss, I, I like the idea of it going through standing committee, especially because being on Heritage, there's work plans that standing committees formulate, and they're based on, uh, it's good for them to have input into what the budget is so that they can formulate their work plan moving forward, and not having any discussion or input from them, um, kind of would take them by surprise when we find out, you know, this is, this is what you're going to be ending up with. Even having that informal discussion is very important, and I think missing that, we're missing the input of those committees that, um, yes, our directors and our, and our other staff have a good handle on it, but there's always the potential that something, um, you know, might need a little further consideration, and we just miss that communication from our standing committees, um, to know what they're working with. So I, I'm not supportive of this, um, I'm not lifting it, but I'm not supportive of this. I would like to say if there was a way to add a review, I'm not saying approval, but a review by standing committees, and, um, not just standing committees, but the subcommittees as in Heritage, which reports to Planning, which has a work plan, which has a budget, which is required to, they want to work within, um, that those discussions, uh, the one-on-one meetings with council are actually for the month of January, anytime between now and the finalization, that it's a priority that these do go to standing committees, to, at least for discussion, that they be brought forward by the applicable staffer or director to the applicable standing committee for information and for comment, whether, then I can see that, um, being a, uh, those comments coming back through this process, but I, I'd like to see that we still have some input from our committee levels.
Thank you, Stephen. Do you want to add to that, or, oh, Counselor Frake, you'd like to add to that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, we received that report at the Admin and Finance Committee, and I welcome my other colleagues around the table here who's part of that committee to chime in anytime they want. I'm still not a big believer in, uh, proponent of committee of the whole, going directly into committee of the whole. I do agree with Counselor Bothwell. I think there's a lot of value in having our standing committees have a, uh, an opportunity to look at what should be in the respective budgets. Uh, maybe we need to look at, maybe some have a hybrid of somewhere between committee of the whole and the standing committees, I don't know what that looks like. We haven't had a lot of chatter about that around this table, if I remember correctly. Uh, it's come on us pretty quickly, so I think we need to have a discussion around the best way to do this. I, I am, like Counselor Bothwell, I'm not a total proponent of going completely 100% straight to committee of the whole. I do believe, however, that every department head should have a, a huge input, and they should, hopefully they're looking at their budgets now. But, um, I think there's a lot of value in going to committee of the whole and letting a lot of the experts on those committees have a look at those budgets and have input. Doesn't mean we're going to accept everything they say, but I think they should have an opportunity to have a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Frake. Counselor Cadwell, then we have Counselor Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and, uh, some good discussion on this. I'm just thinking how, uh, in the past, we've, uh, a lot of the meetings that are moving, that are being set up as the budget process moves forward, a lot of the committee members have part of, have, have input to the budgets because, uh, what I recall, a lot of the meetings consist of budget discussions within the members of the committee and, and the directors. So, uh, been, have, haven't done this many times in the past. I, I don't, I don't think we're going to be missing out on any, any of the, uh, any of the good ideas that, uh, you know, some of the committee members can bring as members of the committees with their input, their dedication and that. So, um, I, I just, because I'm thinking, again, I know I've been to a lot of the meetings, and we, there's, that discussion has been at the meetings before the budget has been presented. So, uh, yeah, I, I'm in favor of the, of the new way of doing it, uh, you know, committee of the whole. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
It wouldn't have come to planning unless I'd asked for it to go on the December 17th agenda, so that we can have something for information, or it would not have been brought forward to my planning committee.
Counselor Sharp?
So I have a comment, which is partly a question. So the committee of the whole, uh, so my comment first is that, um, the draft budget will come out, uh, two weeks before the committee of the whole. And so you'd be able to review it, I'd be able to review it, and they'll actually, um, consult one-on-one with the counselors. I'm on the Admin and Finance, so I, I have a little bit of an inside edge on this. So they will consult with us individually, and it will be posted publicly. And my understanding is that committee of the whole is open to the public.
Absolutely.
And that, so the public, including committee members in the subcommittees, could attend our committee of the whole budget meeting and stand up and say, "Hey, you know, I think that, I reviewed your draft budget, and, um, and I think that you guys are not considering this properly, and then we, as a committee of the whole, would, would consider that", with all of us, rather than, the people might come to our planning committee or our, um, the different standing committees, and then we'll consider it with only four of us present, and then we send it here, and it's like adding an extra step. So I supported this at Admin and Finance, and I think that, that we can work with this more efficiently. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Vardy?
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm inclined to agree with, uh, Counselors Frake and Bothwell. I think by having them go through committee, it gives us an opportunity to kind of dig deeper than you're going to have the opportunity at committee and the whole, so that you can get a better understanding. And I think it helps, when it does come to committee of whole, to, to have a more informed discussion, so.
Thank you. Cia?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, to council. Council, uh, this is a, a really important item, because it's council as a whole that is building their priorities and should be building the budget. It's council as a whole. To develop a high-performance team, this really should be discussed with staff and council. We've provided two weeks in advance. We're not just saying one-on-one, there could be many consultation. Um, there's plenty of time, but it is absolutely critical, I feel, to build this high-performance team, that this be discussed by council and council only. There's plenty of time to work through this. We're going to be working through your strategic priorities that you developed collectively to, to formulate some of the budget, and there's plenty of time. Some of the standing committees are not even elected officials, so I truly believe that the public will have lots of time for input. We're putting it on the website, you'll get lots of feedback, we'll document all that feed, feedback, but really, a high-performance team should be focused on doing this collectively.
Thank you, Counselor Frake, and then Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no issue with it, with this budget ending up with the committee of the whole at the end of it all. I mean, I think that's where it needs to be. It's how we get there. Between December the 6th and February the 10th, when we have the committee of the whole, there's lots of time in there for the committees, standing committees, to have a look at these budgets and participate in these budgets and give advice from their point of view, from the standing committees' mandates. So I see there's room in there for that. I'm not saying we shouldn't end up at the committee of the whole, but before we get there, I think we need to have input from the standing committees. In terms of the folks that are on the standing committees that are lay members, they don't have to vote, but they can be there to advise. They can dare to, they can give us some guidance from their backgrounds, which is vast and very, very, and a lot of experience. So I don't see why we wouldn't want to use them to give us some advice, which we incorporate into this, into the budget. As I said, they don't necessarily have to vote, they can be exempt from the vote because they're not municipal counselors representing the public, but I mean, I think we should look at that very seriously, and it looks like there's time in there to do that. So I'll turn that back to you to think about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, do you want to comment, or no?
Yeah, I'm still coming back to having council look at this as a whole, as opposed to it still remaining at standing committee and council not looking at every budget together at the same time. I'm still thinking that there's plenty of time in that two-week period for council to ask questions, to bring up questions, to meet one-on-one with staff, to raise any concerns or issues with the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Greninger. Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you, to our Treasurer, and I'm in agreement with this new concept, if I might use that word, concept. I know when we have them, in the past, we've come to the standing committees, we look at them, and they're not all together yet, and it's harder to decide whether, you know, that 3% increase is going to be okay, but when we put it all together into one basket, that's when we really start crunching the numbers and saying, oh, we've got a 22% tax increase, we better do something about it. And it's the committee of the whole that really makes it happen, and that's when we really get down to doing business. And I understand the idea of getting more ideas, but I, you know, sometimes I think it's paralysis by analysis if we overthink this. I think we need to get it together and look at it, the whole picture, and see the bigger picture, because that's what we're all here to do, is see the bigger picture. And so I like the idea of bringing it directly to the committee of the whole, so I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Vane?
Just a, through you, Mr. Mayor, just a suggestion, maybe, I'm going to agree with my peer, Counselor Dunstall. I agree that the committees should see it, but maybe, as Counselor Dunstall said, maybe we just could do an overview for the committees. I appreciate very much, and I'm not a big fan of not having lay members, I think they do have a very valuable role in helping us run the town. Whether they should be voting, I agree with Counselor Frake, that that's probably not an appropriate thing for them, considering they are not elected, which is a point that's been raised a few times lately, but I do believe the committees should at least have an overview of what we're looking for, because they may be able to add and say, hey, what about adding this, or maybe that's not required, and they may have an interesting discussion. I know in my committee, the Parks Committee, Parks and Recreation, oftentimes, we have people on that committee that are lay members that are actually experts in some of the things that we're not, and it could be something as simple as a lawnmower. I mean, I have a lawnmower and I push it around, that's what I know about lawnmowers. So when we have to buy a new one, and somebody says, hey, that's not the best machine, I appreciate that feedback. So maybe that compromise would be just an overview and maybe get some feedback that we can bring forward, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vane. Mr. Greninger?
Yeah, with regard to the comments from Counselor Vane, again, instead of recommendations to be made at the standing committee, what we're looking to do is, we want the recommendations to come forward from council as a whole, as opposed to having recommendations made at standing committee. That way, when they're made at committee of the whole, everybody is aware of any recommendation to be added to the budget. Staff takes away from the council priority setting what council is looking for to include in the budget. We devise our budgets, we create our budgets based on those council priorities. If there's going to be any changes to that, all of council should be aware of what is being included in the budget.
I think what the council's saying is some input, and perhaps in that two-week period or week before, maybe we could somehow come up with that, but as far as being reviewed or approved by standing committee, we're saying, let's go this way. But some feedback, we could probably figure something out between now and January 27th.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, through the mayor. So I've gone back and forth several times on what I thought about this process, but one of the things that I actually like about it is that the draft is going to be released on the 27th of January, and it's going to last two weeks, and I feel that all of us here, if you're in your standing committees and you've formed relationships with your committee members, that they'll be able to see it starting on the 27th, and they'll be able to express concerns or have input, and they can directly email any one of us and comment, they can actually comment in the town themselves, and they could identify themselves as a standing committee member, and then all that information will still be there, and we still, then we'll still come together and we'll make a decision as a whole group. So when I look at it from that point of view, I might be a little bit busier, I may not take vacation on those couple of weeks there, but I like it there.
Counselor Vardy?
Just to be clear, I'm not suggesting that committees approve budgets in standing committee, but they should be given an opportunity to review them. That's the work we've been doing all year, and that's our role in the standing committee. So I'm not saying we don't eventually go to committee of the whole, and it's a collective decision, team one, but the standing committees have a right to review them and to be able to dig deeper than we have, because we're going to be rushed when it comes to committee of the whole, there are going to be long meetings, they're going to be six, seven, eight hours probably, so this will help to facilitate that, so. And as I said, it allows you to dig deeper on certain issues to better understand them, as Counselor Vane said, you know, you might get more information about a particular purchase, why it's this way and not that way. So, you know, I see a lot of benefit to including that step, and they don't have to be that formal, you know, they can be easily constituted outside our regular schedule and give people that opportunity just to do that deeper dive before they come to committee of the whole.
And just, I can comment on that, I think that that will be facilitated between December 6th and January 27th. There will be one session of committee meetings through that where the budget can be discussed, so I think that will lend itself to making everyone around the table happy, or relatively happy, anyway. Counselor Frake, you'd like to speak on the rest of the Administration and Finance?
I think we're kind of, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing. We know, we want to end up with the committee of the whole, but we want our committees and the folks that are on the committees who've given us input all around for the last number of years to give some kind of input or some type of insight into where the budget is going, where it should go. And I have heard Counselor Vane say this, I've heard Counselor Sharp say this, I've heard Counselor Ritchie say that. We're not suggesting that we just go straight there. What I'm suggesting is that we should take the opportunity to let those committees have an opportunity to look at these things, and yes, we're going to end up in the same place at the committee of the whole, and it could be the draft budget that the committee is looking at, that's fine. But, and I think we're all kind of saying the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll read the resolution moved by Counselor Bothwell.
Did you want to speak anymore to Admin and Finance Minutes, or should I just ask you the question, one question about them? Can I ask you just one item?
Sure.
Through you, Mayor, sorry. I had mentioned you have a report in there from the Harrington Group, and I just asked if it's possible to get a report brought back to council on what actions the Harrington Group has done for, particularly for Grimsby over the past year, please.
To the mayor, to Counselor Bothwell, yes, we did discuss that at the AF meeting. What we agreed on is that rather than try and answer those questions, is have the Harrington Group come to council at a public meeting like this and give us a presentation around the questions that you've asked, and that way we're all, we'll all hear it at the same time, because, I mean, they have a lot to say, they're a great group, and we share them across five municipalities, so, yes, the question was asked, and that's where we ended up, and if that's okay with everyone else, I think maybe that's the best way to go.
Counselor Vane?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Chair of Finance and Admin. I know we're going to pass a resolution, so I want to ask this question. I noticed there's AF 19-53, I didn't see it as a closed-session matter, it was about a tax write-off. There's really not any explanation there, so I was just wondering if you could explain what it is, if it's, if you're able to discuss it in open session?
I think the Treasurer was going to comment on that.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to the counselor. So we bring a report semi-annually to finance, Admin and Finance, dealing with tax write-offs. So tax write-offs would be residents requesting from MPAC reduction to their assessment for various reasons. So there could have been, say, the most typical are, say, demolitions on the property, the house is demolished, now they apply to MPAC, and the assessment of the property just reverts to land only. There could be a fire at the house, and the house is deemed to be unlivable. MPAC will reduce the assessment on the house basically down to, again, to the land value, or a portion of the house that may be livable, thereby reducing taxes for that period of time. Once the house is, say, rebuilt, or, you know, refinished, MPAC comes back to the house, reassesses it, and the assessment goes back up, and then taxes are restored.
Thank you. Counselor Sharp?
I just wanted to bring one thing up, and so one of our items in new business at Admin and Finance was banners in the downtown for the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital. Counselor Cadwell, can you, do we have an issue going on with banners, is there an issue? Do we have, are we possibly putting banners downtown for the hospital?
If you look at your agenda, you'll notice that there's a notice of motion addressing that, Counselor Sharp.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you, to our Chair of Finance. I just had a question about the corporate emergency communication system and the cost being $333,645. This is to replace our old system. Do we know how long that's supposed to last? I guess that's one question. The other question is, is the agreement that we're signing with Bell and Rogers going to cover that cost over the period of time that we've got to pay it back?
Counselor Frake?
Maybe I should go back to the Finance and Admin Minutes. Let me try and answer that when I go through the rest of the minutes here. It's okay.
Counselor Frake, you'd like to speak on the Minutes?
Okay, let me just finish off where I started. We kind of went backwards there. Thank you, Stephen and Harry. Me and Phil stay there, because I'm sure there's some questions that will come up. Yeah, there was a couple of other items on the agenda I should just briefly go through, because the best interest of time, you can read these minutes as well. There was two reports submitted regarding the comms towers for the town. One of the reports dealt with the long-term, which is a five-year agreement partnership between Rogers and the town to install a tower at Grimsby Fire Hall Station Number Two. That will generate revenue of about $17,000 per year, to answer your question. I do not, I cannot answer the question as to how long that's going to last, I know that the tower we have now lasted over 20 years. The second report was dealing with the emergency comms equipment that goes on those towers. Again, there was another agreement signed with Bell Mobility, and the cost of replacing the equipment was $383,000, that's coming out of reserves, but the revenue that's coming through from these to Rogers and Bell will go back to pay out that reserve. Have I got that right, Stephen? Yeah. Also, there will be new antenna installed in Fire Station Two, and there will be a replacement in Fire Station One. That includes equipment, a lot of radios for the trucks and the guys who are going to be using it for emergency, and this is a combined effort between Grimsby Fire Department, Public Works, and Parks and Rec. We're also sharing three other towers with Lincoln, so, because they're part of this whole arrangement, so we will have access to five towers, even though we have two, we have access to three as well. That pretty much covered those things, if that answers your question, Counselor Dunstall. On the budget, there was a lot of discussion on the budget and the impacts to the budget, and I don't know if you want me to go through them all, I could go through a couple, and again, I'll ask our CFO to address any of these as well. There's a couple of impacts we need to look forward to addressing. One is inflation. Last year or this year, the CPI was 1.95%, so these are factors that need to go into our budget process. There's a 2020 impact assessment coming, which we don't know what that's going to look like. On the operations budget side, the grant funding from the provincial government for 2020 is going to be $54,000, that's down $9,500 from last year. The town of Grimsby's user fees will have to be adjusted, that's for user fees for all of the services and any of the services that are used in the town. We were going to have to factor in the wages and salaries increase, which is going to be 2% from the agreement in 2020. There are, will be, would you believe, an extra pay period in 2020, which is going to cost the town $380,000. That sounds weird, but this year, sleep year, isn't it?
Every 11 years, at least.
Okay. Of course, there's also some other costs, additional staff, and there's some payouts which we have to address. On the capital budget side, we have to consider a federal tax grant, which is going to be $866,000 in 2020, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen. In 2019, it was 828, so we're getting a little more, about 50 grand, 40 grand more. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Grant is slightly higher, it's about the same, actually not by too much. We have to factor in the debt, the cost of our debt, just to service our debt, which is $441,000 in 2020, have I got that right, Stephen? And we have to consider how we're going to address the monies we want to give to West Lincoln Memorial Hospital. 15 years ago, we committed to $2.5 million. Since that time, we have not paid anything into that fund, and with inflation and all the other things that go with it over those 15 years, I think we're talking about $6 to $8 million. And I don't know what to tell you about that, except we, standing committees might have a chance to talk about that. The Peach King Center expansion is going to cost us $5.8 million, and there's a debt service attached to that, I don't know what the number is. And of course, there's an infrastructure levy which is coming, and there's a funding gap there, and I believe that is going to be the case across most municipalities. So that's some of the things we talked about, which was presented by Stephen, and if I missed anything, I'll ask Stephen if it's okay with the mayor to address anything I missed.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Frake. No, that was actually very good, he did a very good job. No, that's it. Those are just some of the highlights in the nutshell for the budget for 2020, some of the larger items that, you know, might cause a little bit of, a little bit of extra focus in this year's budget.
Thank you, Stephen. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and I was at that meeting, it was a very good meeting, good information session. And I just, if, I apologize if I missed it at the meeting, but I don't see anything in here regards to the promissory note from Hydro and possible or potential dividends from GPI, is that something we can be, you know, looking at? or potential dividends from GPI. Is that something we can be, you know, looking at from a revenue side? Through the mayor to you, Stephen, is that, is there, just maybe an update on the promissory note for the members, new members of council, and a little bit of history on that, if you'd, appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. So the promissory note that we hold for GPI comes due February of next year. We'll have to sit down with GPI and decide what we're going to do, if it's going to be renegotiated, paid out. So those discussions will have to happen in the, in the near term. And we'll be setting up a meeting for that. In terms of dividends, we receive dividends if they're declared by GPI or MPI, and if they have the sufficient cash flow to provide those dividends.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, and thank you very much, Stephen, for that information. So obviously, from a dividend side, it's nothing we can bank on. And again, in the past years, anything we did get was pretty much a bonus. So, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing no further questions, moved by councillor Sharp, seconded by councillor Ritchie. Resolved that the Administration and Finance Committee meeting minutes of November 11th, 2019 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved as amended. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we amending the, the report in 1922 to show that we will hold committee meetings during that two-week period?
No, I don't think that, that was part of the amendment. So all in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have Planning and Development Committee meeting of November 12th. Councillor Dunstall, you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to put forward a motion to lift the Grimsby Advisory Committee meeting of October 15th, specifically to have discussion about this civic holiday that was at the Heritage Advisory Committee meeting. I believe I've got some support there to lift.
So you have a secondar? Councillor Sharp, you'd like to be the secondar?
Can I speak on it now?
First, we have to pass the motion to lift.
Oh, so, yes, you do.
Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Sharp. Resolve that Resolution Number PD 19-89 be lifted from the Planning Committee meeting minutes of November 12th, 2019, for separate consideration of item GH 1930 Nellis Day Discussion from the Grimsby Heritage Advisory Committee of October 15th, 2019. All in favor to lift? That's carried. So now we can discuss it. Councillor Dunstall?
Yes, thank you. I felt inclined to do this because it's, it's an important part of our, our community, our heritage. The Nellis Manor is, was originally Bill Thompson that came forward to suggest that we call it Robert Nellis Day. There was some issues there. It came to heritage. I just felt that, I think council as a whole should really decide whether this is something we should look at or just allow it to be the way it is now. And the committee suggested we just not call it anything at this point in time. I, I think we've got the ball rolling. We don't have to decide tonight. I'm not suggesting that. I think we just, I think we'd like, like to have some more discussion about it, I think. I think some of us on council might agree with that, so.
Thank you, councillor Dunstall. Councillor Bain, you wanted to speak on that as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have had some discussions with a number of councillors on this already. I, I did a little research when I read the minutes, and I understand the contention. And councillor Bothwell has brought some things to my attention where I was not present when a delegation was made on this. But my only concern with this, and it's, it's actually been a long-term one, that I've seen us taking down statues and recognitions of, of former prime ministers because, based on today's morals, what they did was wrong. I looked up Robert Nellis specifically and found specific references to the fact that he, I can't say he owned slaves or, but he did take slaves as prisoners. He did take Indians as prisoners. And it wasn't until eight years before he died that we abolished slavery. So the man never broke a law. So we're taking a man who did a lot for this town and we're judging him on today's standards, today's emotions, which have changed dramatically in the past 10 years, let alone the past 100. I think we owe the, the man who, who helped build our town into what it is, or helped build our town, period, founded it. I think we own that. To, to take today's standards and apply them to something that happened 100 years ago, I think is very unfair. I don't think it's right, personally. I don't, I can only imagine how we're going to be judged in 100 years based on what we do today. This society is changing so fast that, you know, what was illegal five years ago is now acceptable. We see people publicly smoking marijuana. So, I mean, it's not, it's not a very good comparison, but what I'm saying is that we can't take our standards of today and apply them against something that was totally 100 percent legal back then. Just my opinion. I, I do support naming it Robert Nellis Day. That's my opinion.
Councillor Sharp?
So, while I agree with councillor Bain on, on that issue, but I, I, so I'm a member of the museum board, and this is separate, the Grimsby Museum. And now we also have a private museum in Grimsby, which is the Nellis Manor. And we're lucky to have a second historical building in, in town that's, that's essentially a public entity. And I think that by recognizing Robert Nellis for the, for the contributions, the many positive contributions that he made to the community, that that will help the Nellis Manor Board to, to maybe host an event or to draw some attention to an event that they may have around the long weekend. And I think that that will help to, will help them to keep our private museum, which is a benefit to, to residents and not a, a burden on our tax bill. So I think that, keeping aside that, like, we do, I think that, that it would be, I would like to name the holiday Robert Nellis Day.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And a lot of good information brought in here, too. And I, I think the, how sensitive this is, and also how important it is to the community, that a decision should be made by, through council as a whole on this, on this, on this item, I'll call it. It is a, the date itself, it's a statutory holiday, I believe, if I'm, no, it's not. Okay. Guess I've been retired too long then. Okay. But anyways, I, again, just with the, the depth of the importance of this, I think we, I would like to look to our CAO. Maybe he could recommend, whether it's a committee, structure, something, how we can do this as council. It's a very important decision that we need to make as councillors for the Town of Grimsby. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cadwell. I think I would, I'd like to speak on this issue as well. I happened to be at the Heritage meeting, and I listened to all three delegations. And each of them had their definitely important points. And I really think council can't make this decision tonight because there were delegations there, and the Heritage Committee voted against it, the Planning Committee voted against it. And in my, in my personal opinion, there were several founding families in Grimsby at that time, including, including the Nellises, but there's also the Moores, the Pettits, the Merritts, the Klein's, the Nixon's. And I'm probably missing some. There were probably more. There was probably 12 to 15 significant family, founding families. So I think what we should, we need to do with this right now is defer it certainly to another meeting. I don't think we can make the decision at this time without having further discussion on this. And I don't know if I need a separate resolution for that, but that's my opinion. We can vote on this, and it's will of council. Councillor Sharp, you'd like to speak again?
Yes, I would. So I did, I spent a great deal of time on one evening going through the many, many deferrals of this. So it's on my phone. I don't want to be rude to go through and look at the notes that I've written here, but...
Actually, now that we have a deferral on the floor, I think we're going to end this discussion now as a procedure. Yes, so I'd like to bring a motion to defer.
There was no motion when I was, you already called my name.
Yeah, I was just...
You had no second on your motion. You already called my name. I'm speaking. So this was brought to council in, in, in 2018, to the previous council. And then it was deferred, it was, so it was brought to council, and each member of the previous council said, "Yeah, I approve of this. Yeah, I approve of this." Right? Robert Nellis is such a, is a member of the community, contributed so much. And they said, "Well, we'll just send it to the committee for, like, a report." And then, and then they didn't make the report. And then Bill Thompson came back a year later to the new council and said, "Hey, guys, just a reminder. I asked you a year ago if you would consider this, and you said that you would, and we all spoke in favor of it." And at that same time, we all spoke in favor of it again. But we said, "Hey, we'll just send it over for, for a report." And then Mr. Thompson has spoken five times to this at different committees, and they've deferred it, and they've moved him around. And now, again, we're talking 18 months later from, from when the request was made, is that we're going to defer it some more, all right? And I don't think that that's appropriate. I think that we have already had, the committee, Heritage, has already recommended once, Nellis Day. This already was recommended, and it came to planning, and we sent it back from planning in one of these crazy deferral cycles. So I think that we should complete this. And I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion within here, to name the holiday Robert Nellis Day. Do I have a secondar for that motion? Second, anyone? Randy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There was a motion to defer, so we will be voting on the motion because the mayor brought the motion to defer, which seeks precedence.
Thanks. I'll read the motion to defer. Moved by councillor Vardy, seconded by councillor Frick. Resolve that Resolution GH 19-30 of the Heritage Committee meeting minutes of October 15th, 2019 be deferred. All in favor? That's carried. Next up, we have the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes as amended. Councillor Bothwell, you'd like to speak on that?
Thank you. Through you, the mayor. Most of the information is in the minutes. I'm going to leave it open for any committee members to ask me questions. But basically, what we did was we just had a public meeting on the superstore adding a clinic use. It was just an additional use that they hadn't previously requested, and that was, that was put through. There was a presentation of delegation from, sorry. So then we had the information report for the statutory public meeting for that 361 self-service road as well. The IBI group for 226, 228 spoke as well on the delegation for the Latchford development, and the zoning amendment application recommendation report was brought forward, and that was approved. The recommended scope of a parking study for downtown is going to be brought forward into the 2020 budget. The pre-consultation and planning studies terms of reference, the region is currently working with the local municipalities to refine those required studies that developers must do as part of the pre-consultation meetings. And there's a number of them that are attached that show some refinements to those terms of reference, so developers know what's expected when they come in with those studies for traffic and wind and shadow, et cetera. And those are, that's an ongoing initiative that's going to continuously be, be reviewed. The director brought forward some planning study recommendations for the 2020 budget, and we will be looking at that further as we come forward with considerations for budget. That's not necessarily what will be incorporated, but it was just brought forward for information. There was some public meeting minutes, and then again, the Heritage Advisory Committee minutes. ROPA 13 has now gone through the Niagara Region's official plan amendment, which includes updates to include their transportation master plan. That's the ROPA 13 that we also had comments that we provided on with regards to Livingston Avenue extension, and asked for some wording to be put in, which a little bit of it was updated for that. We had the status of the development and projects that are ongoing, and I would welcome any members of the public to review those. If they're interested in the status of any developments in your neighborhood, there's updates regularly put into that table. There was some, we did discuss briefly the grants and incentives review for the Niagara Region, the SNP grants, and the impacts of the region potentially not continuing with some of them, which are like our facade improvement for the downtown. There's some matching funds that the region would, would offer municipalities through the SNP grants. And we're just hopeful, as they move forward in consideration, that our regional councillor and our mayor will bring forward the importance of maintaining some of those small, there, there, it's not a lot of money to the region, but for the community and for the downtown, these are vital incentives that help us to allow commercial and retail units in the downtown to do some facade improvements that are, really, really benefit the economic in the downtown. So we'd like to see them continue those incentives, and hopefully, as they go through the budget process, we can put some emphasis on, on the importance to, to the town for those. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it open to any questions from, from council. Thank you.
Stephen, you'd like to speak?
Just regarding the regional incentive grants, I just want to provide an update. I attended the Regional Area Treasurers meeting on last Friday, where the region indicated they are not going to change the incentive programs right now. Everything will remain status quo. The report they got was just an information report. So everything for now will remain status quo, and they wanted everybody to know that, to set everybody's mind at ease, that those incentives will not be going away right at the moment.
Thank you, Stephen. Councillor Bain?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Chair of Planning. Just a couple of questions there, councillor Bothwell. First of all, the Supercenter, are they still proceeding with the five stores and reducing 100 parking spaces? Is that correct?
So those, the original applications, I can't, off the top of my head, tell you how many spaces were reduced. But again, it wasn't necessarily reduced. They're actually expanding parking in some areas. So it was just the overall parking complement, you're saying, from maybe what they requested in the, in the zoning bylaw was less than what would have been the mixed-use parking component. And I can't quote exactly what that was. But this was, this particular item on our agenda was an official plan amendment, just to bring in, align the clinic use with the zoning amendment that was previously approved. So the zoning amendment did go through the regular public meetings and process to get approval for the clinic use. And this was just that they did not, had not originally put forward the official plan amendment, which has to be in conformity with it. So this is more of a tidy-up action that they had to take in order to be in conformity with what was already approved for the site.
I just have two concerns I want to bring in general, not two yourself, councillor Bothwell. I know initially, when I first saw the Supercenter plan, it, it called for a reduction of parking spaces. And I am very concerned, considering especially with the fifth-wheel parking spot with Lozani wants... with Lozani wants to put in a number of units. I don't think we should be looking at reduction, especially when we're talking about increasing parking in the downtown and other things, which brings me to my second point. Again, I see that there's money being put aside, whether it be through the region or elsewhere, for our downtown, we have the DIA, we have the town putting money in there, and yet I look at places like Winston Road and other places in town where we have stores and businesses. I would really like to see some of this money redirected to some of these other places as well. I understand the DIA, currently, I find the DIA is very focused on the immediate downtown, and I would like to emphasize that we have a lot of businesses, and we're really trying to promote those, we're even talking economic development, we're talking industry, bringing in more commercial. We have to show some support beyond just the downtown area. So, that's just a personal view, personal comment, I love the downtown, don't get me wrong, I love going there, and starting in next week or so, every Friday night, they're going to be having specialists down there, and that's great, so I'm promoting that for them, but I'm just saying, let's make sure we spread our money around the town to support all of our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on planning? Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. It really isn't a question, it's just the PD-1991, this is the homes that are being put on the Heritage Register. I just wanted to speak on it for a second, because it first came to heritage, and we're only going to do three homes on that street, and that's Kid Street, that's on the way to Grimsby Secondary School, and we decided to do all the homes, so that everybody in that, on that street knew that their home would be on the register, and some were and some weren't, that would create a lot of confusion. And the purpose of it being is to protect the house in case somebody wants to demolish it. They have six, we have a sixty-day period where we can do something about it if the house has heritage value. It doesn't designate the house, it just allows us, that sixty-day period, to do something if somebody decides that they want to demolish the house. So, we're trying to protect our heritage, especially when developers are coming in and trying to do that very thing, tear down homes and build other buildings.
Great, thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Counselor Sharp?
I just wanted, to be recorded in the minutes, that I'm going to abstain from voting on this approval, due to my conflict within the previous minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp, that will be noted. Seeing no further questions on planning, moved by Counselor Vardy, seconded by Counselor Frake, resolved that the Planning and Development Committee Meeting Minutes of November 12, 2019 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved as amended. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have the Public Works Meeting of November 13, 2019. Counselor Cadwell, you'd like to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, be happy to give a brief overview of the meeting. As you mentioned, our meeting was on November 13, a little bit earlier, we had it at 2:30 because there was another regional event that a lot of the councils attended later on the official plan for the region. But moving forward, we had two delegations at the meeting. One was Ryan Tibbs, who is a business owner on Winston Road, and the other is Annie Trisick, I apologize if I didn't get it, I'm not saying it exactly right, another business owner. And their delegations were pertaining to the parking, amount of parking that's on Winston Road for the businesses, and I'm sure you're all aware of the, most of it, I believe, is, I guess I'm going to call it way-by parking, for the, for the main street on Winston Road. So, a lot of good information was exchanged, committee members had a lot of good questions and that, so, and that, that delegation moved us forward to the first report, which was PW-19-62, which was a recommendation from our staff that we changed the parking down on Winston Road to, let's see, now, it's, it was one hour on either side, I'm looking at my committee members, if I helped me out here, thank you, yeah, it was one hour on either side, recommendation from staff was to make it three hours on the south side, and then keeping the one hour. And again, that, that resolution was defeated by the committee, and I'm just going to read from the notes here, so again, the resolution for the one, to change the three on the south side was defeated, but again, PT, PW, sorry, 19-63, which was a new resolution, it's moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Vardy, resolved that the director be requested to provide a revised Schedule H, in brackets, limited parking prohibitions, prohibitions? Had trouble with that word at the meeting, for the forthcoming council meeting tonight, to accommodate three-hour maximum parking on both sides of Winston Road from Hunter Road to Winward Drive, and that was carried by the committee, so we'll be having some discussion on that. The next report was the tender that we, that was brought forward to us with regards to Grimsby Beach. It's the shoreline protection work, which is going to be done on 12th Street and 10th Street. Again, this is a, we've, we've done other streets in, in the past at Grimsby Beach to protect the, obviously, the shoreline, we have services that, that run right pretty darn close to the edge of the, of the, of the bank, I'll call it, to the top of the bank, and also, yeah, so again, it's protecting our services, obviously, and that, that award came in under budget, the tender came in, it was under budget, which was great to see, and, and it was, it came under, under, very well under budget, but again, that type of work, from a, from staff's perspective, that's specialty work, you know, when you get working along the lake there, and you've got so many regulations and, and, and by the, by the federal government, because they, they own the lakes. So anyways, that was a great report to hear, and we just, again, we were using gas tax money for that, and next year will be the final year to do, I think, two more streets, or anyways, using the gas tax next year to complete the shoreline protection of Grimsby Beach. We also had a report about our annual winter control manual endorsement, which, which was given to us by our, Thomas Hodgkins, again, that, that's a report that we get annually with regards to, to how we handle our winter cleanup procedures, how the town operates through the winter. A great report, and I hope most of council read through that, because it just gives you a good, a good mandate to understand how things are done through the winter. And with that, through our operations manager, we're going to be trying, using just salt this year, I believe it's roads and sidewalks too, Richard, is that, yeah, so, great report, look forward to the report in the spring on savings and how effective it was, so that was, that was passed by committee too. We also had another report, which is the RQMS policy with regards to how the town operates. Again, that was, I believe, here, I got it right here now, forty-six-page report. Again, it's an annual report that we get from staff, giving us, informing us from an operational standpoint on, on how the town works and that, so that was, again, great, great information, a lot of reading, but it's, it's very worthy. And under, oh, other business, our operations manager brought forth, what we're, what we're looking to do is, I don't know if some of you are familiar with, in other communities, our fire hydrants, in a lot of other communities, they have colored flanges on the ports, whether the side ports, steamer port, and, which is great, because what that does, it, two things, it gives the, the responding trucks, it lets them know the liters per minute that would be flowing out of that hydrant, even though the hydrants are painted on the top of the bonnet, which is another good indicator. But the, the flanges, and Counselor Vardy brought it up, we're coming through Beamsville, when it's darker, you, you can really see the reflection, and like, you can, oh, there's a hydrant, there's another hydrant. So, I'm really glad that, again, Richard brought that forward, and we have about nine-hundred hydrants in town. So, just, and Mr. LaRue brought up a very good point, we have winter maintenance on hydrants, we, we check hydrants for water in the barrels, make sure they don't freeze up, if they, if there is water, we pump them out. So, as we, doing our regular maintenance to the hydrants, the flanges will be put on, so it's not like we're having staff go out just, just, just specifically to put these flanges on, and we're hoping that all the hydrants will be showing the, the flanges by, I think Mr. LaRue said sometime in June, because they, they have to pump the hydrants, and then they have to do a flow test of the hydrants, so lots going on there. And the cost of the, for the flanges, I believe is about fifteen dollars per hydrant, if you're using three, oh, sorry, please, Richard.
I didn't tell us what, eighty-five hundred.
Eight, okay, eighty-five hundred dollars for, for doing that, and that's a great program. And that was it. Our next meeting for Public Works is December 11. Any questions, I try to answer with the help of committee members. Thank you.
Counselor Bane?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is more comments and one question to Richard. In regards to the comment about the shoreline, I'm fully one-hundred percent behind that. As I've said from day one, our beaches are taking a beating, but, and I've just spoken to the town manager and the treasurer about this as well, and I want to make sure that this is a, a very high priority for the council, I hope it is anyways, our pier is going to cost us over a million dollars to rebuild. If we allow that pier to become to the point that it is eroded away, we lose it, we will never, ever, ever get a pier again, because Fisheries and Oceans has made it very clear, they won't give us the authorization to rebuild it. So, I really hope that we can make the pier a priority, whether we use some gas tax money, whether we use whatever, but I do hope that it's going to be a huge priority going forward, because the pier is taking a worse beating every year. As far as the hydrant markers, and maybe, Richard, if you could just maybe advise us on this, I, I understand exactly what you was talking about, about putting a little shiny reflective, I forget what you call them, sorry?
Flanges?
Flanges, on the thing. I notice in a lot of towns too, and, and I know your department is excellent in cleaning up oftentimes, but sometimes when we get really bad snowfalls, the hydrants do get buried, I've called in a few times myself on them, so I'm wondering if-
There are a lot of those, don't worry.
Yeah, yeah, but also, my question being is, I know in some towns, they actually have, I'm going to call them poles, I don't know what else to call them, that they attach to the hydrant, so the fire department can see it, this thing's sticking four feet up out of the snow, and unfortunately, the fire department has to do it. Now, I am just going to say something before you respond to that, Counselor Cadwell has passed me a note, he would like to remind residents to clear the snow around the fire hydrants in front of the homes to help firefighters and public works. Having said that, also keep your sewers cleared of snow in the winter too, because that will-
And change the batteries in your smoke detector.
And change the batteries in your smoke detector, so we did it all, but it, back, I know, back to the poles, is there any opportunity to put those on as well, because I know they're just an additional feature, I'm sure there's an additional cost to it, but is there an opportunity to do that? Thank you very much.
I think if we went through the, they do have some maintenance issues as well. Are they costly? Not particularly. I think it would be something that we would look at, just in specific cases where we've identified where these hydrants have had issues, that may be in cul-de-sacs, it just may be in low-lying areas, but most of the time, if we have any issues, we can have them, we can have them cleared in fairly short order anyways.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan, I'd just like to address the comments of Counselor Bane with regards to the shoreline protection, and, and again, the committee, we had, we had a great discussion on that too. That is something that I think it'll be looked at between Mr. LaRue and, and our Recreation Director Sarah Sweeney, it's very important, and again, it's all about where we can hopefully find some funding for that, but, no, that was, we did have a good discussion on that, Counselor, too, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to someone, I'm not sure whether it's Stephen, is he still here, and maybe Harry. First of all, I totally one-hundred percent agree with you, Counselor Bane, on the pier, want to save that pier, I want to see people fishing off that pier at some point in time, safely. But outside of that, the, the shoreline is eroding because of the lake, obviously, and the lake belongs to the feds, so they're destroying our shoreline. Maybe Fisheries and Oceans, maybe Counselor Puff, will can do this. Maybe Fisher, maybe we should approach Fisheries and Oceans and see if we can get some type of grant, if that's, maybe we've tried this in the past, I don't know, but we definitely need to go after the feds and see if we can get some money to help fix that shoreline.
Counselor Bothwell, you'd like to respond?
Sure, I have all the power, with the powers that be within the federal government, just because I happen to be an employee of Fisheries and Oceans, but, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I just think that we, we need to look for every opportunity to look for climate change funding, adaptation funding, and, and, and federal government as well is very, very concerned with that, so I know if we implore those powers that be up there and our local MP and MPP representatives, that we look at pots of money for climate adaptation and stuff to mitigate those, and bump up our coffers.
Seeing none. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Sharp, resolved that the Public Works Committee Meeting Minutes of November 13, 2019 be received, and recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have the GDAC Minutes from November 13, 2019. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and again, as the mayor mentioned, we had a meeting on 8:30 in the morning at, for GDAC, and the, the meeting was just brought up, and I'll, I'll read more information that I've got written out, that I've got written out here on with regards to how it went, but the meeting, the point of discussion of, of the meeting was the, the, the improved downtown improvement, the nineteen thousand grants, so I'm just going to read through what I've got written here, and I'll just say, "Through the chair, just wanted to give an update to council on the recent GDAC meeting of November 13. The committee considered a report prepared by the Director of Recreation and Parks regarding a Main Street revitalization initiative that the town had previously received funding for. There is still nineteen thousand dollars left over from this grant, but the guidelines dictate that it can be only spent within the downtown core, and only for specific things such as streetscaping improvements or business attraction. The report recommended amongst several options that the committee approve the purchase of the red phone booth as public art, and utilize any remaining funding for lighting and beautification in the Main Street area. After careful consideration and deliberation from an economic development standpoint, the committee then considered options for the remaining funds, and decided unanimously that the funding would be spent in order of priority four. Year-round, one, there's three priorities, so I'll just, year-round canopy lighting for the trees in the downtown, and we had a budget to that, is approximately four thousand dollars. Wayfinding signage in the downtown. Again, we had a, our regional representative, Kelly Provost, was there, and we had some good conversation with her, possibly, there can be some funds that can come through the, the region to help us with that. And the third priority was enhancement through landscaping or lighting to the friendly by nature sign located on Christie Street, so as you're coming into town on Christie, just after the, the entranceway into the Giant Tiger parking lot, there's a sign, Grimsby, and it also has a green sign above, it's friendly by nature, and there was just some discussion, maybe we can add some more, a few more plants there, trees there, but what, what the, what members of the committee thought would, would be important, under, again, maybe have some little, a little bit of lighting, so at night, you know, you've got some lights shining on the Grimsby sign, I think, whether it can be solar-powered or, or hydro, but we just put a little budget in for that, for approximately two thousand dollars, so, yeah, good meeting, good discussion. So, that was the basis to the meeting, and we have a GDAC meeting again this Wednesday at 8:30, so if there's any questions, be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Cadwell, congratulations for your first report directly to council, GDAC, I think it's the first one, right? Yes?
Under the-
Under the new, yeah. As a GDAC chair, can you tell us if there, are there any initiatives or any projects underway to attract any kind of economic development into the community? Are there, I mean, is there any discussion around that, any plans, any projects that you can share with us that we can be happy about?
We don't have any, any projects as per se listed on a, on the table right now, but we have had a lot of discussion with regards to economic development, reaching out to the businesses, getting information, and, and also, there's been some, a bit of a flavor of possibly maybe an economic development officer for the town in the future, so- of possibly maybe an economic development officer for the town in the future, so, yeah, that's just been pretty much the, but there has been a lot of discussions, but we haven't nailed anything yet, and we will continue to, to follow up on that because that's very important, obviously, to the economic development of Grimsby moving forward. Right now, the information that we received, the residential tax levy, it's lower, it's at eighty-eight-point-one-two percent, which I remember a number of years, somebody was campaigning, and they said it was ninety-two, but, so I think what's happened there, again, with developments, having businesses below, you know, which is obviously, we have more businesses in town, there's more business, maybe people working out of their homes and that, so, we're moving forward, it's, but anyways, that's the best I can answer, and in the past, I've pretty much given an update from the, from the GDAC meetings that we've had, and I've given a bit of a brief update just on the meeting, but this update was strictly for the nineteen-thousand dollar grant. Thank you.
Counselor Vane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. A couple of points. One thing that I saw was canceled, and this goes back to when Counselor Frake and I sat on the DIA, was the red phone booth. I know that Mr. Mike Willis-Craft of the News Now newspaper has been working feverishly for the past couple of months to try and buy this phone booth from England, for the people that aren't aware. It's a red phone booth, and basically, we were going to connect it so they could make local phone calls and all that. There's been some dispute over the location of it, and part of this grant was supposed to be used to buy that phone booth, and I was very disappointed to see it canceled. It's, it's something that's very unique, and I understand the disagreement with the location. Mr. Willis-Craft wants to put it next to the funeral home on Mountain Street, and other people feel it should be more located downtown. I think this is something that we should look at because I think it would be very unique to our town. I would like to see the town possibly look at putting this into our 2020 budget. I think it would be something that would be very unique to our town, would be a minor attraction. Having said that, some of the money that's in here, as Counselor Furtick said, from the region, the region might have some money to help us with some of these things, which would free up some more of that money towards the purchase of the phone booth. Just my opinion, I think it's a great thing. I think, actually, you've done very well. As far as the economic development officer, I'm really hoping we see that in our 2020 budget. Other towns of equal size have economic development officers, and it has been to their benefit. As Counselor Dunstall said, we've gone down for, or, and Counselor Cadwell, we've gone from ninety-two down to eighty-eight percent. I'm really happy to hear that. Irregardless of what anybody tells you, residential properties do not pay enough taxes to make it worthwhile, and if we're the only pocket that we have to go to, it's just going to hurt more and more. So, that's why we need the, the commercial and the industrial, is to make sure we lower the tax levy on the residents. And the last thing I want to mention, again, something to consider, and it's been mentioned a few times here, one of the things that this town tries very desperately hard to do, the directors, and we have, I've got to say this quite honestly, and I mean, having worked with the town staff, from the town manager all the way down to the, you know, everybody else, it's, we've got the best staff I've ever worked with, and the directors and their staff will work very hard to try and get grants and funds and stuff. I personally have met with the Dean Allison, the MP, I brought the Director of Parks along with me, Counselor Cadwell attended. We've also, many of us have met with MPP Sam Oosterhoff trying to get money. We need a proper grants officer, somebody to solely seek out grants and funds for this town. There is so many things out there, and oftentimes, when you talk to the directors, they're already run to the bone. They've only got so much time in a day, and they're spending a lot of their personal time doing stuff, too. So, I think that's something we need to consider. I think there's a lot of money out there to be had. Beamsville's a good example, St. Catherine's, Hamilton, they're getting hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars towards climate change and other things, and we've got to try and get some of that money, too. One last point is the way sign, wayfinding sign, and, Richard, this is directed to you. I would like to see maybe when Public Works is out and about, to check some of the signs that we have posted. For example, we have a sign posted at, oh, gosh, Main Street and Elm, it's right outside the H&R Block store, there's a sign on a pole, talks about the pottery location that used to be, it's currently under renovation to become a bar, and it still says the pottery thing there. So, maybe when we're out, if we happen to see signs that are a little out of date or maybe not in, or inappropriate at this time, to remove them. So, I'm just mentioning that, Richard, in passing, okay? Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Just a, thank you, through you, Mayor Jordan. Just a quick response to Counselor Vane's question about resurrecting the red phone booth. I'd suggest, talking to the art gallery and the library, I think it'd kind of be a neat thing somewhere on their premises there, considering the fort, the young people, the library serving the community, and if there was a way to make it a free initiative of some kind, but it's also be a tourism draw for, for them. So, just talking to Culture Grimsby and those organizations and see if there's some other type of grant funding or partnership through one of those organizations.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. I'll be brief. I'd just like to comment on Counselor Vane's ideas and, and good points, but, yeah, yeah, exactly, Counselor. With regards to the grant, whatever money is, we have to the twentieth, sorry, March twenty-twenty, to, to have that money, to spend that money, so if the, if council comes up with a red phone booth initiative, I'm only saying there's a possibility, it can be brought for discussion if there's any grant money still remaining, but, yeah, I, again, the phone booth, it took a lot of good, good energy and a lot of good conversation at the committee. It just, just wasn't one of the economic priorities right now, but anyway, something that I think we can maybe, in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Frake?
I'm afraid to mention the word phone booth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the phone booth was actually part of a bigger program, actually, that was, we were looking at twinning with Grimsby in England, our sister community, and that was part of a larger initiative. It's not dead, and, okay, it's dead for now, but I think we'll resurrect it, and we'll probably get another community group involved in helping us twin with, with Grimsby in England. The DIA is going to drive that. I don't know if anyone here knows why we are called Grimsby. You already know, I told you. Anyways, Grimsby was named by Governor Simcoe, because Governor Simcoe is from West Lincoln, England, and he named most of the towns along the lakeshore here after the towns of West Lincolnshire in England, and that's how we ended up being called Grimsby. So, just so you know, I always wondered why, but I went and found out, but that's the reason why, so that's why we want to twin with them and see if we can resurrect this red phone booth, which is going to come from Grimsby, England. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no further questions on GDAC, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp, resolved that the Grimsby Economic Development Committee meeting minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have a notice of motion, going to be read by Counselor Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I've just got a, just, I'll read the, the notice of motion. It's, has been requested by myself and second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that staff proceed with the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital Initiative to create banners to be placed within the DIA boundaries. The funding to be provided from the physician's recruitment funding reserve. Thank you.
Counselor Vane, you'd like to comment on that?
Yes, just quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
No, there's no comment, I'm sorry, there's no comments. I'm going to, yeah, there's no discussion, sorry, until next meeting when we will be able to comment on the notice of motion. Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. I acknowledge the notice of motion given now, and it will be given for consideration at the next council meeting. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that the proposed bylaw amendments as described in item seven A in regards to the amendment to bylaw sixteen-eighty-two be approved by council. All in favor? Yes?
My only concern is, we did have, prior to putting up time limits on there, we did have some issues with people parking there for extended hours, a lot of construction workers, that type of thing. We even had one person who got angry at getting a ticket, and he faced all our signs. I, I agree with increasing the one hour, I think if you're going in for a yoga session or something, one hour's not enough, you're going to have a coffee, one hour's not enough. I think three hours on the north side may be a little bit too long, considering there is very limited spaces there. There's, I think, maybe twelve, fifteen spaces there, and you've got a bunch of new stores going in there. I'm sorry?
Twenty-one, I counted today.
Oh, twenty-one, okay, there's twenty-one spaces. We've got new stores going in there, we've got the All Board, which I recently went to, been to some other ones in there, they've got great, Jackie O's, which is another one we went to, got some great stores, but I think putting it to three hours, you're really going to, I, I think you may end up harming, doing more than good. I just, I'm going to suggest two hours for the north side, just a suggestion, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vane. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that proposed bylaw amendments as described in item seven A in regards to the amendment bylaw sixteen-eighty-two be approved by council. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that the Committee of Adjustment meeting minutes of November fourth, two thousand and nineteen be received and filed. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Vardy, resolve that the correspondence from the litigation pleadings be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Vardy, resolve that the correspondence from the municipal modernization program from November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frake, resolve that lead be given to introduce bylaws nineteen-dash-ninety-nine to nineteen-one-oh-three, and that be read a first time. All in favor?
Would like noted that I'm going to abstain from, from this.
Counselor Sharp has noted his abstention. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have new business. Is there any new business? Counselor Vane?
I just want to make a very brief comment on, just, it's more of an education thing. Recently, there was a letter printed regarding the Peach King expansion. I want to enlighten or expand on what I said earlier. The, the town staff in this town are number one in my books, and they, the director, Sarah Sweeney of Parks and Recreation, for example, put together a, along with the help of her staff, put together a vision and a plan for the Parks and Rec Department, and one of the things was to expand the Peach King Center. One of the, a couple of points I want to address on that is that there's a lot of input and many years and many, many, many hours put in to create this plan with a lot of input from the public, from other staff, from council, of the day, that type of thing, and it wasn't a very light decision. And as Director Sweeney said at our last meeting, this is a very much needed thing now. I know some of the council has talked about deferring parts of it, but it just costs us more money. One of the other concerns was in regards to tax increases. The increases being proposed to accommodate these changes are very minor. One thing we have to keep in mind, every one percent that this town increases our taxes is actually only a zero-point-two-five percent increase on your overall tax bill. So, when we're talking two or three percent, to, for the services provided, it is well worth the money, and especially when we're looking to increase our commercial and that. So, the main point I want to be, make people aware of is the fact that our town staff does not make decisions lightly. They are very well researched, they have input from council, and most definitely from the public, so please don't ever think that we're just out looking for ways to spend money. Thank you.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things that I'd like to bring to people's attention. I sit on the art gallery board, and I just want to remind people that there's many great programs that the gallery puts on for both adults and children, and there's a really fantastic exhibition on right now called Thicker Than Water, Exploring Family Dynamics, and the gallery is free, so it's a great opportunity to go in and, you know, see some amazing things by local artists. And that's until, excuse me, December eighth. And finally, I'll be speaking with, I don't know who, maybe the CAO, about bringing some artwork into Town Hall, so for a very small purchase, a few hundred dollars, we can have a rack, and then we can start displaying some of what we have in the vault, and, you know, we have great pieces of artwork that we've invested in, let's share them broadly with the community, and we'll be able to change that, and other than the apparatus to hang it, it's free. Thank you. And get your flu shot.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Just two things, and I'll be quick. A huge shout-out to GSS. The football team, they won their Division Two championship, I believe it was two weeks ago. They played in, at Wellon Centennial, played Wellon, Wellon beat them all year long, and I spoke to the principal today, Matt Miller, I believe. Anyways, he's, I guess the school is just, just on fire with the, with spirit, and it's just a great, great thing for GSS, especially when, when, you know, you know the, the future of that school is not, you know, is going to be changed in the near future. And the last thing, again, this is November, which means it's Movember. So, again, a few of us are sporting the Movember look, and just, just reaching out, if you can donate or support anybody who's in, who's in the cause for, for supporting prostate cancer and that. I'm a survivor of it, and I, it's very important, and it's, just reach, again, just making everybody aware about Movember for November. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Following up on Counselor Vardy's wonderful presentation on the great stuff that the art gallery is doing, right next door, their sister organization, our Grimsby Public Library as well, offers wonderful programs for adults and, and children. So, please, there's a great website, on the town's website, with all kinds of neat stuff for everyone. I'm going to particularly focus on the Grimsby Author Series, which is a major fundraiser for the library, and the spring twenty-twenty tickets are going to be released very soon, actually, on November the twenty-fifth. They go extremely quickly. There's three events coming up for spring twenty-twenty, Tuesday, March thirty-first, Monday, April twenty-seventh, and Monday, May twenty-fifth. You can see the different authors that are going to be presenting at those series. It's a great event for a great Christmas gift, so please, think about it for yourself, your family, your friends, to get together and enjoy these outings. There's a little bit of wine, and a lot of good chat, and a lot of good reading. So, again, tickets are seventy-five dollars for all three events, and they go on sale first thing on Monday, November twenty-fifth. They're available online through, you can purchase them online through Eventbrite, so even if you're in your pajamas at your breakfast table, you can quickly get on there and secure those tickets. So, that's, I'm just calling out for a promo for that, and then just have two other quick notices. Tomorrow night is our, planning is holding their cannabis open house for cannabis land use, so we encourage anyone in the community who has an interest in finding out what the consultant has, is proposing to bring forward. That will be available for comments from the community and input, which we'd like to help us to formulate that official plan wording that we're going to put in there. So, that's tomorrow night, starting at six o'clock here in the council chambers, and it's a cannabis production facility, basically cannabis land use open house for the public. And the third thing I would like to ask, if it's possible, we passed in August two thousand and nineteen, this council, the intention to direct staff to prepare a whistleblower policy, and Fort Erie has just recently passed their whistleblower policy, so I'd just like to see if we can have an update on where we are with that coming to council at some point. So, that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp?
I just have one thing reminded by Counselor Vardy and Counselor Bothwell, talking about the sister groups, the library and the, and the art gallery. I also have some information coming about the Grimsby Museum, and currently, we have a request out, we're looking for items from the eighties and nineties. So Grimsby Museum is pleased to announce that we'll be hosting a Grimsby in the eighties and nineties exhibit in January of two thousand and twenty. So that's coming soon, a few months from now. And the exhibit will highlight some people and places and events from Grimsby in the eighties and nineties. And, you know, if you guys maybe have some, or anyone watching online has some cool old memorabilia, it's not that old from the eighties or nineties, but maybe you still have a drawer of, of neon Varnay headbands and whatever. That would be really cool if you brought it out. And you guys know you all wore them, but bring them back. It'd be cool to see at the museum. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Dunstall?
Just a quick note, the Grimsby and District Chamber Commerce is holding their Business Awards of Excellence this December fourth at Luana Gardens, and actually, it'll be the last year that it'll be held at Luana Gardens because it's been sold. So we'll be losing that, so just to let you know. December fourth, I believe it starts at five-thirty, and tickets can be bought online. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Seeing no further new business, I just have one thing that we'll touch on tonight. I was given the opportunity to attend the Legion and the Veterans Appreciation Dinner along with Counselor Cadwell and Counselor Furtick, and it was very nice to see the, the few veterans from World War II that are remaining. There were a couple that were sick under the weather and couldn't make it, but every year, we lose more veterans from World War II. I think Grimsby and Beamsville, there's, there's certainly less than ten left, and they're all in their ninety-five to ninety-seven, and it was just very moving to see them out. And I met with Captain Leonard, who is the new Chair of the Poppy Campaign, and he is looking at bringing up some sort of banner campaign like they do in quite a few of the municipalities in Niagara, to just honor some of the several veterans that we had, have in, in the community or had in the community. And the year before, we actually saw a presentation on our World War I veterans, and Grimsby had, I think it was over twenty-six casualties from, in World War I, and Grimsby was such a small population at that time, that it was, it was over fifteen percent of the adult males at that time. The adult males between, I think, eighteen and twenty-five. So it, we do have a serious significance in, in the world wars and in the military, and now with a new Poppy captain, we look forward to getting those banners up for remembered state 2020. Thank you. Seeing no further business, new business, before we go into closed session, the next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, December second, 2019, at seven PM right here. Thank you, and good evening. I'll just read the resolution in open before we move into close. Moved by Counselor Vardy, seconded by Counselor Frack. Resolve that council meeting closed session under Section two-three-nine-E of the Municipal Act, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before an administration tribunal affecting the municipality or local board, Grimsby Air Park. Closed session under Section two-three-nine-two-B of the Municipal Act, two thousand and one. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, Grimsby Energy Incorporated, compensation. Closed session under Section two-three-nine-two-E of the Municipal Act, two thousand and one. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. And Section two-three-nine-two-F, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that pers, purpose. By or adjust their litigation update. All in favor to go into closed? And that's carried. We're into, in close. Good night, everyone.